Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Tuesday Morning Board Meeting for this Tuesday, July 25th. For introduction purposes, I'm Todd Wilchon. I am the Chair of the County Board this year. On my left, fellow Commissioner Jennifer Brinkman. On my right, Vice Chair and fellow Commissioner, Mr. Bill Avery. Joining us this morning from the County Attorney's Office, David Durbin. From the County Clerk's Office, we have the County Clerk, Mr. Dan Nolte, and Kelly Lundgren from the County Board Office. We have the Chief Administrative Officer, Carrie Egan, and the Deputy Chief Administrative Officer, Ann Ames. Now, if you'd please join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you please start the agenda?
The Coffee and Breast Open Meetings Act is located on the wall through the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk's staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item 100 minutes, approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, July 18, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the last Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, July 18. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Number two are claims, approval of all claims processed through July 25, 2017.
Move approval of the claims.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve all claims processed through July 25. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Number three is a special presentation. This is introduction of Siobhan A. Loser, Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department Director Appointee.
Good morning, Mrs. Loser.
Good morning.
Loser her?
Yes, that'll work. Loser. Good morning.
Welcome, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, good morning, Commissioners. I thank you for the opportunity this morning to tell you a little bit about myself. I'm excited to come to Lincoln. I'm excited to work with the Health Department and to get to know all of you and to build that relationship. I just have a quick presentation that I wanted to present, just to give you a little bit more about my background. So, this is me. I have my Masters in Public Health, and I'm also certified in public health, and recently the appointee for the Health Director for the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department. My journey into public health started with my parents. Some of you may have heard this story already, but my stepfather was a Vietnam War veteran. When he returned from the war, he had a heroin addiction and battled that kind of all of our lives growing up. And it wasn't until he started to get sick in the early 90s, and he was sent away to a hospital that was 75 miles away from where we live. So, we really didn't see his disease process. We didn't see him ill or understand why he was sick. And even on his death certificate, when he passed away, it just said he died of kidney failure. And it wasn't until four years later, when my mom, who started to get sick, went to the hospital and found out that she was HIV positive through his IV drug use. And she was raising us four girls. I'm the oldest of four. And at that time, I say it's my first step into public health because we noticed a lot of our family, our friends, our church family began to shun our family because they didn't understand the disease and didn't understand how it was transmitted, and didn't understand that if you came to our house, it was okay to hug us. It was okay to use our utensils. It was okay to hug my mom. And so, that, I think, was my very first intro into public health because I had to learn very quickly about the disease and kind of educate my family and friends that it was okay to be around us. And so, from there, I went to school to become what I thought was going to be a virologist and study HIV and find a cure. And so, I landed in medical technology, which is basically laboratory science. And I worked in different hospital labs, including a Department of Defense lab, and transfusion services, and microbiology, which really laid the foundation for public health because we learned about all the pathogens that cause disease and how they're transmitted and how you can stop transmission. And from there, I found out that I was really more about population-based impact. And in the lab, it's very isolating. You're working on one patient at a time. And while that's very purposeful, I miss the community, and I miss the education, and I miss the empowerment that you can get when you just give someone information that can help change their lives. And so, I went back to school and got my Masters of Public Health degree from Eastern Virginia Medical School. And from there, my husband was active-duty Air Force at the time, and he was a computer operator. And he said, you know, I think I want to get out and go to nursing school. And so, he went to nursing school, got his RN, and he said, I think I want to move back to Omaha. And I said, okay, well, you've been in Virginia for six years with me and my family, so let's try Omaha. And so, I've got a position at the Douglas County Health Department. And in my first year there, I was in three different divisions, which was great because it laid the foundational exposure for me to work in each type of division for those core foundational functions of public health. And so, my very first job at Douglas County Health Department, I was a community health planner, working on health disparities. And so, from there, access Medicaid program, the funding was cut. And so, it resulted in this huge layoff. And I was one of the first ones in. So, I kind of got bumped into environmental health, which turned out to be a good position as well because I was a case manager for kids with high lead levels in the childhood lead poisoning prevention program. And so, really got to do that one-on-one work with the inspectors as they found the hazards in the home. From there, I went on to be the Public Health Emergency Response Coordinator, which was basically preparing the community for any type of natural disaster or community event, making sure that we were able to prepare for, respond to, and recover from those types of disasters. And so, while I was there, I had the opportunity to work on our H1N1 mass clinics and all of that planning that was involved. And then, also, when we had Ebola, the patients who came in through Ebola, I was very integral in those planning stages with the airport and even with the community partners, the emergency managers, on how we were going to set up a system across the metro that if anyone were to call 911 with those signs and symptoms, what was going to be the community's response. So, working with all of the first responders to set up an Ebola unit that was draped and ready to go if someone called and needed it. From there, I also, during my off time, was adjunct instructor at Creighton University in the undergrad program for the Health Administration and Policy Students. It was basically a public health 101 class. And so, that really, to me, was the fun part of it because while I was kind of siloed in public health emergency preparedness at the time, it gave me the opportunity to continue to learn about the vast subjects in public health and to stay abreast of all of those topics. From there, I moved on to be the SARPICAS Health Director, which is my current position until September 5, upon board approval. And there, I've done some major things as far as shifting our priorities and doing our strategic planning and bringing in new grant funding. And those are some of those. You can, for sake of time, skip some of that. But this is my family, and we are happy to join Lincoln, as I said, my husband. He is currently in school to get his Bachelor's in Nursing, since he already has his RN license. He's kind of in informatics. That's been his job in nursing, doing electronic health records and Epic and those things. And we have two daughters, Elise and Aubrey. Elise is a third grader, starting in the fall, and Aubrey, she's three. And so, we're excited to join Lincoln. We're excited to be a part of this community. And when I look at everything at the end of the day, it's about ensuring that these girls and everyone's family can grow up and have an optimal life, healthiest that they can be. And I just want to do my part to ensure that we can do that.
Excellent. Thanks so much. Are there any questions from any of the board members? Hearing none. I just want to thank you again for sharing your story with the public. I know it's not easy, but I think it does tell an important story about your background. And I think it definitely is beneficial that you share it with us. And we look forward to working with you on issues important to public health in Lancaster County.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, can you please go on to the correlating item?
This is under New Business, 5A, is approval of the appointment of Siobhan A. Loser as the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department Director, effective September 5, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the appointment of Siobhan A. Loser as the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department Director. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
You.
Okay, next is number four, a public hearing. This is a public hearing regarding a petition from 10% of property owners within the relevant portions of Hidden Valley Acres, Hidden Valley Acres First Edition in Lancaster County, Nebraska, and formation of the Hidden Valley Acres Road Improvement District for the paving of Prairie Rim Road, Deer Valley Lane, Wind River Trail, South 107th Street, Ellen Ridge Road, and South 109th Street.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing regarding the formation of the Hidden Valley Acres Road Improvement District. Anyone here to testify in support?
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. For the record, Michael Reardon appearing on behalf of the proposed district. I'm an attorney here in Lincoln. What I'd like to do is go over some of the concerns, and I think one of them was voiced at your last Tuesday meeting about these types of districts, then go through the process for you to acquaint you about how that happens. Then, I think there's some other people here today that want to address you also in regards to the district. Last week, I heard some concern about road improvement districts as opposed to or versus SID, sanitary improvement districts. The primary difference between those two types of mechanisms is that on a sanitary improvement district, and I'm certainly not an expert in it because we don't have them around here, but I happen to live in one, so I know where some of the concerns lie. But on an SID, it's typically used by a developer at the very outset to help finance and install improvements, not only roads, but sewers, electrical, obviously, your paving, and any of the other improvements that are needed in a subdivision. It's just a manner of doing the financing to pay for those types of improvements. And there are typically no houses yet when that SID is approved. And in the case of some of these that have gone belly up, the only person you can look to is the developer himself because there aren't any other property owners out there at that point in time. A road improvement district is different, at least in the ones I've been involved in, because the subdivision is already built out. They have gravel roads. And the only thing that they're allowed to do on an RID, a road improvement district, is to pave the roads. And they can also do work on culverts and do other improvements, but they have to be related to the road itself. We've also received, in the past, on other improvement districts, people are nervous about the fact that once we put this road in, then the county assessor is going to come down and increase the valuation and thus increase the taxes. And I've heard Norm Aganaw say many times, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, if there's anybody from his office here, they do not do that. What they do look for, though, is if there's a pattern of houses selling for increased amounts. And if they see that pattern, then they'll come in and they will look at the situation. But the fact that the road is being improved is not, in and of itself, a mechanism for the assessor to come in and increase the values. The other concern is, and I think it's come up in most of the districts I've been involved in, is do I benefit? Or I don't think I benefit from this road. Maybe you don't abut it. You don't think you got your driveway going out on a county road, and so, you won't be using the paved portion of the road. And that's a fair argument. And typically, those types of situations are not addressed at this point in time. But when the road improvement district sits as a board of equalization, that's when the determination is made as far as whether or not there's benefit to a property owner who's objecting to it. The last thing I'd like to go through is just the process for you. And we're in what I call the organizational stage. If you would approve this district, then the trustees are elected at the election, and we move forward, and they go out in what I call the pre-construction stage and get their bids on the paving and anything else out there. And by the way, it's also the other benefit, the side benefit to property owners would be that, at least it's been the situation in the districts I've been involved in, that the paving companies are more than glad to pave a driveway or make similar types of improvements out there. So, it is a benefit out there to the property owners. The next is the financing stage. I go into district courts, and we get, hopefully, get bond anticipation notes approved. And then, the trustees will work with a bank or a stock brokerage firm to set up the financing. The next stage, of course, would then be the construction stage. And the trustees have an obligation to, prior to the construction stage, go out and find the lowest responsible bidder for who's going to put the paving in, who's going to do the engineering work, and that type of thing. Then, the last stage is simply the payoff of the debt. Again, in the ones I've been involved in, I've only had one or two instances where we've had to go after a property owner to get them to pay their special assessment that's levied by the county treasurer, who's the ex officio treasurer of the district. Fortunately, we didn't have to go all the way to foreclosure. They came through and paid their interest and the principal on the special assessment. With that, I would attempt to address any questions that commissioners may have of me.
Are there any questions for Mr. Reardon? I just have a couple. And you mentioned it at the very end, that you talked about the special assessment. Can you give a ballpark figure what the special assessment might be for a property in this subdivision?
Well, it's difficult since the people that are trying to initiate this did have an engineer look at it and give a bid, but that originally was for the entire area, not just... What we're looking at now is the original Hidden Valley subdivision and a portion of the Hidden Valley Acres First Edition. And I'm not trying to skirt your question. I can tell you what I've experienced in the past, but that's not a very good comparison because all districts are different. But I think what I'd rather do is have one of the other, the property owners that's going to speak to you today that's more familiar with that.
And related to that, I don't know if you can speak to what the usual length of time. Was it 10 to 15 years? I can't remember.
On the assessment?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's typically 10 years.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, no, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience here to testify in support of this resolution?
Good morning.
Could I get you to go ahead and sign in and administer the oath? Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Good morning. My name's Todd Bloom. I live at 6421 Prairie Rim Road, which is in the proposed road improvement district. I've lived there for about eight or nine years. Our neighborhood is a fairly well-established neighborhood. I believe there is only one lot that doesn't have a house on it at this point. Otherwise, all the lots are occupied. Our roads are currently gravel. They have been since the neighborhood was developed back in the early 90s. About 15 years ago, there was a movement within our neighborhood to pave the roads. The group that was leading that, maybe one of the leaders, passed away, and it kind of died off at that point. And so, recently, within the last year or so, a group of concerned neighbors came together and met. And so, that's why we're here today is we're interested in getting our roads paved and are encouraging you to vote for approval of our road improvement district. I feel like we've maybe done some of the homework that is required. You asked Mr. Reardon about the costs. We did contract with an engineering firm, also got bids at this point from just one contractor so we could get some sense for, is it this much? Or is it this much? Or where does it land? So, we could make some informed decisions about it. And at this point, I think, again, you asked about a range. The range, we believe, is somewhere from $15,000 to $17,000 per lot that would be amortized then over 10 years. And the residents would have the opportunity to pay it all upfront if they would like or participate again in the assessment each year and pay it off with interest. In terms of significance to the county, there really isn't, shouldn't be lots of expense to the county for, expense or effort to the county for allowing us to do this. We're paying for it ourselves. I think you probably have some engineers who would come out and do an inspection. We'll have our own engineers that are going to hopefully build this thing to county standards. I suspect that there's going to be, well, I know there's going to be less gravel and rock that's going to need to be delivered to those roads. That would be less expense to the county, at least in the near term. Less phone calls to the county engineer's office, ask them to come out and get the roads graded or to get gravel delivered. I happen to have them on speed dial because the roads are typically a little messy. And it isn't that they do a bad job. It's just there's a lot of traffic on these roads. I mean, there's three acre lots. There's families, people coming and going. Why we want to do it, there's a lot, as you well know with gravel roads, there's a lot of dust. There's a significant section of heavy washboards through the roads. When it rains, obviously, it's muddy. In the spring, when it's thawing, it's particularly soft and mushy through there, a lot of traffic. Again, and overall, we would really just like to make our lives better and make our properties nicer. And so, that's why I'm here testifying. Hopefully, you'll give us your approval. So, any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Bloom?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else present wishing to testify in support?
[beep]
Good morning.
Good morning.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes. My name's Todd Shoppe, and I live at 10,800 Ellen Ridge Road. Lived there for 24 years. We were not one of the first, but we, you know, we love the country. But I just wanted to stop by and really advocate for your support in this district because I really do think it's going to help with the quality of living in the country. It'll cut down on the speed with people driving through because washboards are pretty bad. It'll help cut down on the sound because, again, gravel and washboards. It will help with a multitude of things and just make the quality of life just that much better in our environment. I know there's a little bit of cost associated with that, but it's something that, over the years that I've lived there, the 24 years, we looked at this multiple times. And, you know, it's like, you know, everybody, there's a lot of growth. There's a lot of things happening around us, and there's areas that do have that. We just kind of feel like now's the time to do it.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Shoppe? Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify in support? Good morning. Please sign in, and the clerk will swear you in.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes. My name's Brian Kramer, and I live at 6,800 Prairie Rim Road. And I would encourage you to vote for the district as well. For me, for us, it's kind of a quality of life with my house fronts the road, obviously. And with the dust and the wind out of the west, it tends to blow the dust right to our house, and it makes it difficult to sit on the front porch in a late evening and enjoy ourselves because we got this cloud of dust rolling off the road all the time. And with it being paved, that would go away, and it would just enhance our neighborhood and kind of bring it more to an urban neighborhood, which is what it's becoming with the city growth encroaching all the way to 98th Street. Now, we're just a half a mile away, and it would kind of set our neighborhood up for being that urban look that it will have someday in the future. So, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Kramer? Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
I'm curious about what you think the whole community's position is on this. I mean, you had to have 10% of your residents sign the petition. Do you have more support than that?
I believe so. I don't know the exact numbers. I missed our last neighborhood meeting where the hands were raised. I think now that the neighborhood is, we had the whole neighborhood, and we were looking at paving everything, but then we kind of cut it in half because of the previous work done on the district. And I think generally, the half that's left is in favor of, I think, probably 50% or more. But maybe, but I don't know the exact numbers.
Todd? Let me say, Mr. Bloom?
That might be a question for Mr. Reardon.
Okay. Or maybe Mr. Bloom. I don't know if Mr. Bloom would like to answer. You can come forward and address that question.
A combination of things. We did do a hand raise at the last neighborhood meeting, and then I've gone door to door and kind of tallied up what the votes are. And I think we're about 75% in favor at this point.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions for Mr. Kramer? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to testify in support? Good morning.
Good morning.
Please sign in, and the clerk will administer the oath.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. My name's Judy Reiners. I live at 6521 Prairie Rim Road. And I think I was the second house that was built out there when this development took place. And I think our roads have been poorly maintained for a long, long time. I didn't never, I don't remember a time when there wasn't washboards and dust. And I just think that all the other acreage developments around us are paved. So, I think it's time, and I just think it would improve quality of life for everyone. Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions for Ms. Reiners? No? Okay. Anyone else wishing to testify in support? Please sign in, and the clerk will administer the oath.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir. My name is Tom Mann. I live at 6,501 Prairie Rim Road. Judy and Todd are my neighbors, both sides of me. And I'm just here to, you know, show my support for this and hope you guys will vote for it, too. It's going to greatly reduce the expenses on the county for road maintenance and control the dust, hopefully noise, too. So, I'm here for sport. Any questions?
Any questions? Was it Tom Matt? Sorry.
Mann, M-A-N-N.
Mann, sorry. Any questions for Mr. Mann? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to testify in support? Seeing none. How about in opposition? Anyone here in the audience wishing to testify in opposition? Good morning. Please sign in, and the clerk will administer the oath.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. I do. My name is Pamela Fazer, I live at 11,000 Aspen Canyon Road. Hidden Valley Acres was developed in two phases, and my property is located in the first addition. A road improvement district has been proposed twice over the past 15 years, and it was opposed by majority of the property owners in the first addition each time, including this time. The most convenient and most used exits from the first addition are onto 112th Street between Pine Lake and Old Cheney Roads. 112th Street is gravel, it is not scheduled for paving in the foreseeable future. The Road Improvement District is primarily a project desired by the property owners located in the first phase of the development. It is my understanding that the county engineer signed off on a proposal to pay Phase One of the development a number of years ago, with the caveat that the paving should end at an intersection. The Road Improvement District proposal was then drawn to extend paving to Aspen Canyon Road in the first addition to meet that recommendation. My property is situated at that intersection, but my driveway is on Aspen Canyon Road. The exit onto 112th Street is approximately a city block distance from the driveway, and that is the route I use when exiting the development. I understand that the only guidance the Road Improvement District statute offers is that assessment be based upon proportionate benefit. I would argue that I would receive no benefit from the project. At best, the opinions I obtained from a number of realtors was that paving is important to some buyers, but not to others. I would also argue that the paving extension to the intersection of Aspen Canyon Road is not required. There is precedent for not ending the paving to an intersection. The Whispering Creek acreage development immediately across 112th Street was paved by the developer, as well as approximately 2/10 of a mile of 120th Street, to allow the easternmost access of the development paved access to Old Cheney Road. There was apparently no recommendation that the paving of 120th Street end at an intersection. Finally, the proposed settlement is, assessment is per lot. If, as demographics change with the sale of properties in the first addition, and owners vote to pave those roads, my property would be assessed a second time. Even if, as someone in the neighborhood meeting suggested, my assessment was for some number less than the sum of the other property owners within the Road Improvement District, there is absolutely no reason that property owners in the first addition would agree to reduce my assessment, should a second Road Improvement District be approved. Also, the 14, or $15,000 to $17,000 estimate for the paving is just an initial figure, it could go higher. It's my understanding that does not include interest that has to be factored in over the years. It also, is my understanding, it does not include the wind-up costs for the Road Improvement District at the end of that 10-year period. And there is also no guarantee that there wouldn't be a default if there happens to be a recession or some other economic event where people would end up upside down on their mortgages, there would be no recourse to recoup that money. And then, the remaining owners in that Road Improvement District would be expected to make up that difference. I respectfully request that the Road Improvement District be limited to the first phase of the Hidden Valley Acres development. If the board finds that the paving extension to Aspen Canyon Road is necessary, I request that my property be exempted from the assessment, as there is no evidence of benefit to my property. And if a second Road Improvement District is created, there is nothing to prevent a full double assessment of my property. Thank you.
Any questions? And it was Pamela Fazer?
Fazer.
Any questions for Ms. Fazer? Do you by chance have a map? I know, we talk about roads, maybe Mr. Reardon has a map?
Yes.
To kind of show us, yeah, that way it's an exhibit that I think the public would benefit. Just, yeah, I'll come up here in a minute. Okay, thank you so much. And on the map, can you show us what you're talking, where your property is located?
Okay, my property is in the first addition of Hidden Valley Acres, it's a lot two. The proposed paving ends at the end of Ellen Ridge Road, where it intersects with Aspen Canyon Road. My driveway is on Aspen Canyon Road, toward the middle of the property. The first addition begins where this dotted line is, in here.
And so, if this paving district were to be approved, you would just be assessed for the frontage on the road that's being paved, correct?
No, it, the proposal is that each property owner be assessed on a per lot basis, not based on frontage. So if there is a second vote for another, I could be assessed again.
Yeah. Those are valid concerns. Commissioner Avery?
Your objections are not at all addressed in the process that allows for a vote of the people involved, and the people affected.
The people in the first addition would not be included in that vote. I would, my property is one of two, I think, or maybe three, that abuts the initial phase of the acreage development. And so, there, the whole neighborhood is not involved here. The first, the property owners in the first addition have had a majority vote against the Road Improvement District both times that it's come up.
Any other questions for Ms. Fazer? I'd have a question for Mr. Reardon regarding the issues that there would be multiple property owners who potentially could be subject to a special assessment during the, both phases of the paving. Is there provisions that would prevent that from happening?
I'm not sure I understand the question, but let me take a shot at it. The, obviously, on the map that's being shown, the area shaded in green is the area that would make up the proposed district, which is predominantly the original addition. And it doesn't include, with a couple of exceptions, the second addition, to which this lady has her home. The, you know, it's kind of confusing, because you do have the power as a board, and I know you might want to check with your attorney on it, but you do have the power to change boundaries if you so desire. But to me, this is more of a question of benefit. We included that because that's what we were told, the county engineer wanted us to do, so we brought the road to the intersection. Later on in the process, as I indicated to you before, the trustees will act as a board of equalization and determine what the benefit is to each of the properties. And the ones I've been involved in before, they generally looked at it as a per lot assessment, and everybody is assessed equally. So, in, it's my opinion that the issues that she's raising should be raised at the time of determination of whether or not there's a benefit.
Okay, so, according to the map, lots two and nine, they have proposed boundaries that will be paved on the north and south side. Like she mentioned, you know, the other part of the division that's not being paved in the future, if they come in and do a special improvement district, what her argument is, is that she would be subject to a second special assessment on that lot, given the same criteria that you outlined. And so, my question was, is there a consideration given to those property owners who are on the boundary of both Phase One or whatever, Phase Two, where you have roads being paved and roads not being paved? I mean, because ultimately, what she's getting to is, I think, the prospect of being subject to two special assessments.
And I certainly understand that and sympathize with it. All I can tell you at this point in time is, is that we're trying to comply with county engineer standards, and the issue will be addressed again down the road when it comes to assessing the properties through the Board of Equalization trustees. There certainly is that possibility, that her concerns could happen, but I'm sure that the trustees in this proposed district would take that into consideration, but that's my guess.
Commissioner Avery?
Let me get this clear. Your property actually fronts on a street that is not included in this proposed district?
Yes, that's correct.
But it does have a portion of the property that faces the Improvement District, correct?
Yes.
So what you're worried about is getting assessed there, and then if they do another Improvement District for the front of your house, you get assessed again.
I was one of the property owners who, in the first addition, who opposed the Road Improvement District entirely.
And your reasons were the same as today?
Yes.
So you were, it was all about the assessment, right? The, you do get a chance to vote on this.
But I am one of only, I think, two property owners who isn't in the first phase, and again, of the, of the development. And it is a majority of those people who want this, and so, there is no chance for me, under the current structure, to really have a voice.
Well, you, what you mean is, there's a very real possibility you would lose, but you would have a voice. Winning is not the only way your voice is heard.
And I understand that, but it's also the fact that the extension of the paving is based on, what is my understanding, is a recommendation of the county engineer, not a requirement. And there is precedent for the paving to not be extended to an intersection immediately across the road.
Right. And I would, yeah, and the resolution you referred to is done several years ago. I think there aren't any commissioners left on the board. Maybe Commissioner Shore was around back then, but that was a prior engineer as well. But I think, we, I very much appreciate your concerns, because, and I hope that the trustees take that into consideration, because I, like you indicated, the fact that your house does not front the proposed paved road, and the driveway will not, you know, be affected by it. And I would hope that the trustees take that into consideration when they do the assessment for the lots. But I don't know, if there's any other questions? Commissioner Avery?
My, my expectation would be, if you do get hit with another assessment, you could come to this board for remedial action. I don't know if that's covered by the law, Mr. Reardon?
That would be a question for the county attorney.
Dave Durbin, Deputy County Attorney, Lancaster County Attorney's Office. I don't believe that that's provided for in statute. I don't think that we would be sitting over this and reviewing it. I would have to check into that, Commissioner.
Say that again.
I don't believe that we would be the one regulating their assessment, because they would be the one sitting as the Board of Equalization on this. I would, I would have to double-check on that, and there might be a petition in error that they could file, but I would have to, again, look into that further.
Okay.
And again, the Board of Equalization consists of people that want this.
Okay. Any other question for Ms. Fazer? Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience today testify, wishing to testify in opposition to this paving improvement district? Okay, anyone here wishing to testify in a neutral capacity on this paving district? Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing for the formation of the Hidden Valley Acres Road Improvement District. Mr. Clerk, please move on to the correlating item.
This is under New Business 5B, is a resolution in a matter of setting the election and boundaries of the Hidden Valley Acres Road Improvement District in Lancaster County,
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, setting the election and boundaries of the Hidden Valley Acres Road Improvement District. Any discussion? Commissioner Brinkman?
I would just say that I completely understand the opposition from the homeowner that we heard from. I also would encourage the district to take into consideration what the benefit is, as Mr. Reardon alluded to, that there's a process for doing that as this project moves forward. But this is the result of a lot of acreage development and new expectations of homeowners that are living in and around Lincoln. We see a lot of these developments that now expect urban amenities in a place that didn't have them when they were first built. So I think we will consider, we will continue to see these kinds of issues come before the board.
Any other discussion? Okay, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. 5C is a resolution in a matter of adopting a salary schedule for district court staff
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt a salary schedule for district court staff attorneys. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. D are, is an amusement license renewal application for community crops to hold a fundraiser on Saturday, August 26, 2017, at Prairie Pine Farms at 3130 North 112th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the amusement license renewal application for community crops to hold a fundraiser on Saturday, August 26th, at Prairie Pine Farms. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. E, or special designated license application for Myers Wine, Inc., for the following events: reception at Roca Ridge at 5265 Prairie Sage Drive, Roca, on August 26, 2017, and a community crops fundraiser at the University of Nebraska-Lincoln Farm Side at 3130 North 112th Street, Lincoln, on August 26, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the special designated license application from Myers Wine for two receptions, or two events, excuse me. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. F is an amendment to the agreement with information first for professional services on an as needed basis to support the county clerk's record-keeping functions using H-P-E-R-M. The cost at county will not exceed $5,000. Term of the contract is March 6, 2017, through March 5, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the agreement with information first for professional services regarding the H-P-E-R-M. Any discussion? Oh.
I don't, I just want to know if you guys have any questions?
Ah, yeah. This is, this is just a renewal, right? Okay.
So the money is there?
Yeah, we haven't used, actually, anything of the last contract, so there's lots of money left.
Perfect. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any additional discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. G is a software sharing agreement between Nebraska State Patrol and Lancaster County at the request of the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office for the use of Mac software. The cost to the county is $24 per user per year. Term of the agreement is one- Term of the agreement is one year from the date of execution.
Good morning, Terry Wagner, Lancaster County Sheriff. Commissioner Brinkman had emailed me yesterday about some questions about MACH, and when I looked at the agenda item and the correlating contract, it doesn't provide much detail. So, real quickly, MACH stands for, I found this out this morning, is Mobile Architecture for Communications Handling, and it's a program developed, it was developed by the Iowa Department of Transportation. They use it on all their snowplows. It's a way to track vehicles in the field, and it's a good management tool. State Patrol adopted it from Iowa, and we have gotten on board, as well as Lincoln Police, and it really is helpful when we have a multi-agency event, like an escapee from the penitentiary or one of those kinds of events. We can tell where the State Patrol units are, our units are, and LPD units are, and we use it on a daily basis. So the, the cost per user is, each mobile data terminal in our vehicles has the MACH software, and then, so each of our, each of our patrol cars has the MACH software. It's $24 per user per year, which is, is really reasonable.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the county sheriff? Mr. Commissioner Avery?
This is a renewal of a existing contract?
Yes, sir. We've been using this for, I think, a couple of years now.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the software sharing agreement with the Nebraska State Patrol for use of MACH software. Any additional discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. 5H is an amendment to county contract C-16-445, sub-grant agreement with the State and Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services for child support enforcement services provided by the Lancaster County Attorney's Office. The amendment extends the agreement from October 1, 2017, through September 30, 2018. The county shall be reimbursed an estimated amount of $1,400,956.46 for the services.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract agreement with the State and Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services for child support enforcement services provided by the Lancaster County Attorney's Office. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. I is an amendment to county contract C-16-446, sub-grant agreement with the State and Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services for child support enforcement services provided by Lancaster County Child Support Referee. The amendment extends the agreement from October 1, 2017, through September 30, 2018. The county shall be reimbursed an estimated amount of $290,757.07 for the services.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with the State and Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services for child support enforcement services provided by the Lancaster County Child Support Referee. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. 5J is an amendment to county contract C-16-444, sub-grant agreement with the State and Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services for child support enforcement services provided by the clerk of the district court. The amendment extends the agreement from October 1, 2017, through September 30, 2018. The county shall be reimbursed an estimated amount of $418,515.02 for the services.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with the State of Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services for child support enforcement services provided by the clerk of the district court. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. K is an agreement with the Blue Valley Behavioral Health Crisis Response Counselors for after-hour screening and assessment on an on-call-as-needed basis at the Youth Services Center. The county will pay $100 per hour for the services. The cost to county is not to exceed $9,000. Term of the agreement is July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018.
Michelle Schindler, Lancaster County Youth Services. This is a continued contract we've had with Blue Valley. Just to recap, approximately 40% of our youth are on mental health, or psychiatric medication, so we do have a large proportion of youth who have mental health needs in our facility. Currently, we are served by two providers. One is child guidance. Child guidance is onsite about 120 hours a week. Most of that is reimbursed through the region, and then the county pays for a case manager who also supports those services and provides supervision. The contract that we're discussing right now is for after-hour services by Blue Valley. Predominantly, that would be when we have a youth who comes in for a new intake and requires further assessment, or if a youth indicates through a variety of means that they need mental health services after hours, and that's what Blue Valley does.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Schindler?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with Blue Valley Behavioral Health Crisis Response Counselors for after-hour screening and assessment for, at the Youth Services Center. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. 5L is an interlocal agreement with the following counties for the safekeeping, care, and sustenance of preeducated juveniles at the Youth Services Center. Lancaster County will be reimbursed at the rate of $276 per juvenile per day, and this includes Cass County, Cheyenne County, Dodge County, Johnson County, and Knuckles County.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the interlocal agreements with several counties for the safekeeping, care, and sustenance of preeducated juveniles at the Youth Services Center. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
No.
Motion carries two yes, one no. M is a contract with Sid Tool Company, Inc., doing business as MSC Industrial Supply Company, Inc., using the NASPO Value Point Contract Number 1862, State of Nebraska Contract Number 14283OC, to provide industrial supplies. Term of the contract is upon execution through June 30, 2018. The cost to county is not to exceed $35,000.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Sid Tool Company, doing business as MSC Industrial Supply Company for industrial supplies. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. N is a contract with the Lincoln Journal Star for the annual service of publishing legal notices and all other verbiage necessary to conduct county business. Term of the contract is one year, beginning June 9, 2017, through June 8, 2018. The cost to county is not to exceed $30,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with the Lincoln Journal Star for the annual service of publishing legal notices. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. 5O is an amendment to county contract C-17-524 with Murphy Tractor and Equipment to provide skid, steer, loader rental. The amendment extends the ending term of the contract from January 31, 2018, to May 21, 2018. There is no pricing change to the county for this revised term.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with, with Murphy Tractor and Equipment to provide skids, steer, loader rental. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. P is an amendment to county contract C-14-359 with Nebraska Sod Company, Inc., for the annual requirements of sod, sod replacement, and installation. The amendment renews the contract from July 15, 2017, through July 14, 2018. The cost to county is not to exceed $1,000.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the, or amend the county contract with Nebraska Sod Company. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Q is a resolution in a matter of the closure of Structure H-211.
See Mr. Schroder coming up.
Good morning. Good, Schroder County Engineering Department. This is a road that is temporarily closed for concrete box culvert H-211 because of some danger from the erosion along the sides of the road, and I guess this resolution's to close it until it can be, or corrected. The culvert is kind of targeted for replacement in 2018, and the, the main reason that it was closed is because of the massive amount of erosion at the edges of the road along the box culvert. So, I guess, I just wanted to let you know where it was and...
If I recall, this was a culvert that was blown out this spring?
Yes.
When there was the heavy flooding up by Waverly?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in my district. Okay, any questions for Mr. Schroder?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to close Structure H-211. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. R is a contract between Constructors Inc. and Lancaster County on behalf of the Lancaster County Engineers' Office for the redecking of Bridge N-138. The cost to county is $424,089.23. Work is to be completed on or before November 20, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Constructors, Inc., for the redecking of Bridge N-138. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. 5S is a contract between High Plains Enterprises, Inc., and Lancaster County on behalf of the Lancaster County Engineers' Office for scour, critical repair at Bridge H-120. The cost to county is $71,507.56. Work is to be completed on or before September 11, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with High Plains Enterprises for scour, critical repair at Bridge H-120. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. T are contracts with the following medical providers for specialized medical care of general assistance clients. Providers will be reimbursed at the Medicaid rate, and this includes Bryan Physician Network, Dan L. Moser, DC, PC, David L. Temperley, DC, PC, Eye Surgical Associates, Lincoln Eye and Laser Institute, Lincoln Radiology Group, Nebraska Dermatology, Omega Surgery Center, Snyder Physical Therapy, South Lincoln Dermatology, Southeast Nebraska Hematology, Star Anesthesia, Sue Jeffrey Physical Therapy, PC, Surgical Associates, Surgical Care, Trinity Chiropractic, Urology, PC, Urology Surgical, and Wayne Vida Tech, DPM.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contracts with the following medical providers for the specialized medical care of general assistance clients in Lancaster County. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. U is a grant contract to Nebraska Crime Commission for the Operation Tipping Point Program. The commission will provide $66,215 for, and the Lincoln Police Department will provide a match share of $12,143 for total project cost of $78,358. The grant period is from July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018.
Good morning, Sarah Hoyle, Lincoln Lancaster Human Services. This grant is a state grant through the Office of Violence Prevention. It funds the gang outreach coordinator from the Lincoln Police Department, which you'll be hearing from on the next agenda item, and then it also funds an evaluation through the University of Nebraska-Lincoln. Match is provided through the Lincoln Police Department. It's in-kind match, so it comes via supervision of mat and then office space and mileage and so forth.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with the Nebraska Crime Commission for Operation Tipping Point Program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. V is a grant contract with the City of Lincoln Police Department in amount of $57,515 for the Operation Tipping Point Program through the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice Juvenile Services Aid Grant. Term of the grant contract is July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Matt Baker. I was here last year. I spoke in front of you guys. I just wanted to talk about how the program is growing, the direction that we're trying to go into. Last year, we were really working under a really individualized programming, getting individual youth from the public schools. Our goal last year was really trying to get into the schools and, and really try and grow within the schools, because as data will show, without education, there, there really isn't any hope for my referrals. So, so we're really pushing education. Last year was really trying to get in the schools. We're in the schools now. Almost 100% of our referrals come from the schools. Last year, most of our referrals, really up until now, have been middle school and high school, collaborating with UNL, and working with the data. What we've done is trying to move into a lot of prevention efforts. So prevention is a little harder to predict, right, who's going to actually be in the gang. You can't really do that, but what we can do is look at crime in certain areas of Lincoln, look at the education, the predictive factors in school, and then really try and hit those locations. So one thing that we're really trying to push right now, I'm collaborating with the Boys and Girls Club. Every Tuesday, we're opening up basically a basketball tournament for the public in the Park Middle School area. It's free to the kids. We have referees. We have time clocks, and really trying to provide something that maybe a lot of these families can't afford. We started off, we've been going strong for about four weeks. We started off with 10 kids. Now we're pushing up to 50. We expect that we're going to be over 100 by the time October. Just kind of by word of mouth, just last week, we had three courts running at one time, all with referees, all with time clocks. And what we're trying to do is we're trying to establish this and then try and hit different locations, and trying to work on that with the pre-prevention efforts. As far as the referrals, we're still getting them in from the school. I'm now in the school when school's in session, Monday through Friday, almost a whole school day. The schools have opened up their arms to me. A lot of my kids, they have like resource blocks where I'm able to go in the school, where they want me to go in the school and meet with these kids. What they've noticed is the youth that I'm meeting with weekly, their behaviors have really decreased in the schools, letting them kind of excel. I mean, if they're not in class, then, then they're not doing good in school. We've, right now, I got 21 youth in the program right now, and that's not including the prevention side of things that we're trying to do. I got 16 of them are doing, are excelling. I'm just going to kind of pull up these numbers. So this summer, I helped six youth kind of get jobs through detasseling. We have 12 of those youth out of the 21 that we were able to get into athletics, either through public schools or the YMCA. We have five of those youth that have participated in some type of tutoring program, whether it's through summer school. And then we got 13 of those 21 youth participating through my referrals that were able to participate in our community members, which is either like the Lighthouse, Boys and Girls Club, Big Brothers, Big Sisters program. And so what I'm doing with that is working with the families, working with the youth, and then working with the schools and trying to make a full circle in their life of success. So this year, our goal is to get younger because what the information's going to tell you, the younger you get, the better off you're going to have. So right now, last year, we only had one elementary kid. And this, this year, my goal would probably trying to get about seventy percent of our youth, either in sixth or seventh grade referral rate. What I noticed last year is elementary kids and sixth and seventh graders, they kind of have an innocence about them, maybe that older kids don't have. And it's a lot easier to persuade them or to show them a different way of doing things before it becomes habit. So that's kind of what I'm doing in short. So I just wanted to thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Any questions?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with the City of Lincoln Police Department for the Operation Tipping Point Program. Any discussion?
You were not on crutches last year.
No, I, this weekend, I ended up getting a severe case of gout, and it's been
Too young for that.
Yeah, it's been brutal, so.
And again, thank you for your service and your work with the population that needs a lot of attention. So thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. W is a grant contract to Nebraska Commission on, for the coordinated response to reducing violence against women in Lancaster County. The commission will provide two hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Lancaster County will provide a match of fifty-two thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars. And the Lincoln Police Department and Family Violence Council will provide eighteen thousand four hundred and two dollars for total project cost of two hundred and eighty-six thousand sixteen dollars.
Good morning. This is federal funding that is administered through the Crime Commission. It allows for us to contract with several of the key players in the coordinated response process. Those players are Voices of Hope, the Police Department, the Sheriff's Office, the County Attorney's Office. The match comes via the County Attorney's Office, the specialist, the domestic violence specialist that they have working on this, and then also through the Sheriff's Office, through their D V specialist. And I have different agency directors that are part of this, as well as an investigator from the Police Department that can share more information on this.
Okay, any questions?
Do we already have a motion?
You just made one.
Yeah.
Second.
I was asking about discussion, but, okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with the Nebraska Crime Commission for the coordinated response to the reducing violence against women in Lancaster County. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Five X is a grant contract with the Family Violence Council in amount of fifteen thousand dollars for the coordinated response reducing violence program through Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice. Term of the grant contract is June first, two thousand and seventeen through May thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen.
And the Family Violence Council are the ones that draft the grant. They are also the ones that coordinate this process. And going through the rest of the agenda items, several of the agency directors have made it down here this morning. Thank you very much. Just when their agenda item comes up, they can come up and talk about their specific contract. For those agency directors that weren't able to be here, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with the Family Violence Council for coordinated response and reducing violence program through the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Y is a grant contract with the City of Lincoln Police Department in amount of forty-nine thousand two hundred and five dollars for the coordinated response reducing violence program through the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice. Term of the grant contract is June first, two thousand and seventeen through May thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen.
Good morning, I'm Steve Wary. I'm the Domestic Violence Coordinator with Lincoln Police Department. I've been in this position now for about a year and a half. When I was in front of this board a year ago, I only had about six months under my belt. I think it's important sometimes to just give a few statistics. I will not make this long at all, but I think a lot of times this highlights the issue of domestic violence in our city. A lot of people aren't aware. In the last year since I visited with you last, L P D has investigated one thousand four hundred and fifty-six incidents of domestic assault. We've investigated one thousand two hundred and fifty-five incidents of domestic disturbances, three hundred and twenty-five protection order violations, and almost five hundred telephone slash social media investigations. As you know, telephone and social media, we take a lot of complaints now that have some domestic type of component. These statistics also don't include numerous child neglects that we investigate that are associated with domestic violence. Having a year and a half now in this position, I cannot say enough about the good work with our coordinated response with resources such as Voices of Hope, Friendship Home, the Child Advocacy Center, and also the Lancaster County Attorney's Office. Without those resources, I'm afraid many of the victims that we are trying to assist in this would just be lost in the wind. These resources have shown our victims that they do not have to go through this alone. Victims, even though we hear it, and it is true, a lot of them are repeat victims, but they don't want to be victims of domestic violence. And so with our coordinated response with these resources, we really have shown victims that they do not have to go through this alone and, and are seeing some successes. I know the numbers a lot of times can be frustrating. When I look at them, they seem to be very consistent, but I can personally attest to several success stories and wouldn't be able to do it without that coordinated response. Thank you.
Excellent. Any questions for Mr. Wary?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with the City of Lincoln Police Department for the coordinated response to reducing violence program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Five Z has been withdrawn. Five A A is a grant contract with the House of Hope in amount of forty thousand dollars for the Halfway House Program. The contract is funded by the Joint Budget Committee for the period of July first, two thousand and seventeen through June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with Houses of Hope for the Halfway House Program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. B B is a grant contract with Friendship Home in amount of fifteen thousand dollars for the African-American Children's Advocate Program. The contract is funded by Juvenile Justice Prevention Funds for the period of July first, two thousand and seventeen through June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen.
That's a mouthful. Thank you. My name's Kay Matthews. I'm the development, program development director for Friendship Home. I'm going to give you a little data, but I really want to talk to you a little bit about what we do. Steve Wary referred to us anyway. Friendship Home will serve approximately sixteen hundred victims and their children throughout the year with either shelter or services. Approximately five hundred and twenty-five will be served in shelter. Last year, ninety-two youths, sixty-eight percent of them being between the ages of twelve and seventeen, lived with us. We have an eight-bed communal shelter, and we have twelve single-family shelters. We provide all kinds of advocacy services, groups, et cetera. The most important piece I think we offer is that we provide stability to families that are in crisis. Many of these children have witnessed repeated acts of violence against their non-offending parent. So the opportunity to provide them with adults who care about them, who look like them. Our African-American Children's Advocate, Mary Kate Fultz, is a kind of a grandma, kind of like me, and kids feel really safe with her. We do address three of the priorities for serving juveniles in the community. Last, earlier this spring, we served a Native American mother with a thirteen-year-old son. Very respectful. He was very quiet, very into sports, basketball particularly, and very, school was very important to him. They made a transfer when they came into shelter, which was disruptive for him. It was difficult. We can assure that children get to school through either buses or through cabs. But we noticed who, he had been attending our children's group pretty actively, but was skipping, started skipping it. Mary, who's kind of tuned into kids, went to him, had a conversation, discovered that he was really struggling with math. The school that he was in now was a little farther ahead than he'd been. Mary explained that we could talk to his mom and that we had tutors within our volunteer groups who could come and help him with that, which we did. He returned to groups, still working on his math. That's, that's a work in progress. But part of, I think an important part of what we do, and we're really proud to be part of an organization, a community that, that sees the importance of serving youth, particularly children who are in crisis. Sixty-eight, sixty-nine percent of the children that we serve have been identified as persons of color in a community where we're, what, twelve point one percent not persons of color? Anyway, as far as William, we were able to connect him with resources that are part of the same funding source and others that are directed towards juveniles. Juvenile, that sounds so awkward when in fact it's just an age range, isn't it? Particularly with one of the after-school programs where he could get help with his homework on a regular basis. So we're proud to be part of a community that placed importance on kids who have very little opportunity to make choices in their lives, but that can be directed. We can interrupt that and provide them with some stability and the reminder that they do matter. So thank you very much for your support, Friendship Home, and our work with kids. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions for Ms. Matthews? Thank you for taking the time to join us this morning. I would entertain a motion.
Approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with Friendship Home for the African-American Children's Advocate Program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Five C C is a grant contract with Y M C A of Lincoln in amount of eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars for the Teen Night and Non-School Days Program. The contract is funded by Juvenile Justice Prevention Funds for the period of July first, two thousand and seventeen through June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with Y M C A of Lincoln for the Teen Night and Non-School Days Program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. D D is a grant contract with the Community Action Partnership of Lancaster and Saunders County in amount of one hundred thousand dollars for the Basic and Emergency Needs Program. The contract is funded by the Joint Budget Committee for the period of July first, two thousand and seventeen through June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen.
Good morning. My name is Bai C. I'm the Community Action Executive Director. Community action empowers people living in poverty to reach economic stability. We address the causes and conditions of poverty in Lancaster and Saunders County with sixteen distinct programs. Those programs reach into several impact areas. Early childhood education, hunger relief, financial well-being, and emergency and basic services. The contract that you're considering this morning helps to fund our basic and emergency services very specifically for programs that address homelessness prevention. Two of those programs work very hard to keep families housed, and two of those programs work very hard to move families from homeless situations, living on the street, living in a shelter, living in their car, to a home with intensive case management, supporting them for two years to keep those families housed. Community Action's primary goal, as I mentioned, is to help and support families as they reach economic stability. But one of the things I think that we all know is that providing and assuring that basic needs are met, shelter, food, transportation, is very important. So that's how the funding that is provided through this contract is utilized to assure that families receive housing, that utilities assistance is provided, that rent assistance is provided, that finding and being placed in permanent homes is being provided. So thank you very much for your previous support, and thank you for your consideration. Last year, Community Action serves sixteen thousand, that's an unduplicated count, number of individuals, providing slightly over seventy-two thousand services. So we very much appreciate your services. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. C? No, thank you so much for joining us this morning.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with the Community Action Partnership of Lancaster and Saunders County for the Basic and Emergency Needs Program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. E E is a grant contract with the League of Human Dignity in amount of five thousand dollars for the Independent Living and Barrier Remover Program. The contract is funded by the Joint Budget Committee for the period of July first, two thousand and seventeen through June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen.
Morning, my name is Mike Schaefer with the League of Human Dignity. The league provides an array of services that assist people with disabilities to maintain independence in the community and to avoid being in institutional settings. The particular contracts, the contract that you're considering this morning is for our Barrier Removal Program. This is a program that provides grants of up to five thousand dollars to individuals with physical disabilities who are income-eligible. We receive funding from, well, a little funding from United Way. We received some funding from the City of Lincoln Community Development Department. This funding, eighteen thousand dollars, allows us to provide grants in Lancaster County outside of the City of Lincoln. Grants include accessibility modifications such as ramps, vertical platform lifts, modifications to bathrooms so that individuals can get in and out of their home and in and out of their bathrooms. Funding, part of the funding that you're considering today is also for the Lincoln Center for Independent Living. That program provides for information and referral, transition services, transition of folks from institutional settings, from nursing facilities back to their home, back into the community, and transition of youth with disabilities from secondary education to adult life. That can be in the form of work, that can be in the form of just managing their independence. And we also provide independent living skills training. Our staff provide training to folks in how to manage their personal life. We do provide systems and individual advocacy as well, and peer support and peer counseling.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Schaefer? Thank you again for joining us.
Thank you.
Move approval.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with the League of Human Dignity in the amount of fifty thousand. I think there may have been a error in the introduction. It was fifty thousand, not five thousand, for the Independent Living and Barrier, Barrier Removal Program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Five F F is a grant contract with the Good Neighbor Community Center in amount of seventy-five thousand dollars for the Food Pantry and Perishable Food and Basic Needs Programs. The contract is funded by the Joint Budget Committee for the period of July first, two thousand and seventeen through June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with the Good Neighbor Community Center for the Food Pantry and Perishable Food and Basic Needs Programs. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. G G is a grant contract with fresh starting amount of ten thousand dollars for the Transitional Shelter Program. The contract is funded by the Joint Budget Committee for the period of July first, two thousand and seventeen The contract is funded by the Joint Budget Committee for the period of July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Monica Zinke. I'm the Executive Director at Fresh Start, and I just wanted to come and give you a little information about Fresh Start and what we do as a refresher, and also to thank you for the support that you've shown our program for the past several years. Fresh Start is what's called a transitional shelter, which is a really unusual model. It's communal living. Everyone has a roommate, but it's a longer term. So, we only have the one program of this shelter program, and we serve 24 women at a time, and they can stay for up to a year. So, it gives them more time than a regular emergency shelter setting to really get back on their feet, look at what they need to do to do first things first, to take care of healthcare needs before they look for their next job, that kind of thing. And so, we provide all the basic needs, but we provide a lot more. We have 24-hour staff on site. We have case management that we do. We do a lot of information and referrals. We do a lot of crisis counseling. And the other thing that we do is that we're really a safety net and a catch-all for women that are homeless, because our population that we serve is for any reason of homelessness. And most of the longer-term programs in our community are for a specific cause or a specific factor of homelessness. So, we're kind of the catch-all for women that might not have the right diagnosis or something like that for a different long-term program. So, we're really an important piece of the safety net for Lincoln for women that are homeless, and we do that through our, our long-term program. So, thank you very much for the contract that you're considering today. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Ms. Zinke?
I move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with Fresh Start for the Transitional Shelter Program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Five HH is a grant contract with Youth for Christ, in an amount of $10,000 for the Parent Life Program. The contract is funded with Juvenile Justice Prevention Funds for the period of July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with Youth for Christ for the Parent Life Program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. II is a grant contract with the Child Guidance Center in an amount of $22,638 for the School-Based Substance Use Prevention Program. The contract is funded with Juvenile Justice Prevention Funds for the period of July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, I'm Katie McLeese Stevenson. I serve as the Executive Director of the Child Guidance Center, and I'm excited to be here today to talk with you a little bit about this contract that you're considering. We are the largest provider of mental health services for children in Lincoln and Lancaster County. Last year, we served over 2,000 individuals in our variety of programs. The contract that we're, is before you today is for a new service for us, and it will be substance use prevention services at Lincoln High School. We have found, we have therapists in 15 of the Lincoln Public Schools. This would make 16. And what we have found is that offering services within the school setting has many advantages. We typically have youth that are in school, and so that might be easier for them and their family than getting to our center for an additional appointment, especially if parents are transporting and have multiple jobs and multiple children. And so, so we find that our no-show rate is lower when we're serving kids in the public school. We have a similar service to this that we offer at Lincoln Northeast High School four days a week and at Mickel Middle School two days a week. And so, this program is for youth who are at high risk of substance use due to their own behaviors and issues, or perhaps those of family members who may be experiencing substance use. And so, this is an educational program as well as a therapy program for those individuals. We've also worked out with the public schools that if we have youth that are in this service long-term for both individual and group therapy, that they can earn a credit for being in this service. And so, that also helps them as they're trying to, to graduate from high school, because we know how important that is. There's a rise in the use of substance use in our community and across the country, and we see that particularly with adolescents. So, we are excited about this program, and it is new, as I said, and so it would start for us the second week of school, which would be August the 21st. We give all the schools and the kids the first week to get settled, and then our services begin the second week. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and again, thank you for your consideration of this.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Ms. McLeese Stevens?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with the Child Guidance Center for the School-Based Substance Use Prevention Program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Five JJ is a grant contract with Voices of Hope in an amount of $48,766 for the Coordinated Response to Reducing Violence Program. The contract is funded by the U.S. Department of Justice Office on Violence Against Women Act Grant, passed through the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice. Term of the contract is July, is June 1st, 2017 through May 31st, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with Voices of Hope for the Coordinated Response to Reducing Violence Program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. KK is a grant contract with Voices of Hope in an amount of $5,000 for the Crisis Intervention and Advocacy Program. The contract is funded by the Joint Budget Committee for the period of July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with Voices of Hope for the Crisis Intervention and Advocacy Program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Five LL is a grant contract with the Center for People in Need, for the Center for People in Need in an amount of $10,000 for the Neighborhood Food Program. The contract is funded by the Joint Budget Committee for the period of July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
Good morning, Ms. Brash.
Good morning. How are you all?
Thank you for being patient and...
It was fun hearing the other people, so, and interesting, so, didn't mind at all. The Center for People in Need serves thousands and thousands of people every week through a variety of programs. One of our programs, though, that is significantly asking funding is food. We see every week, and you can see from the handout I gave you, that we had 141,880 visits for food last year in 2016. That's enough to fill Memorial Seats and Memorial Stadium and three Pinnacle Bank arenas. So, that just gives you a clue of how many people we do see. And we, when we distribute food, we also talk about other resources in the community. We hand out resource books. We try to get them signed up for everything we possibly can, because anything we can do to increase their income means a bit less reliant on food and other programs. We had 11,421 unique people receiving food in 2016. That equals enough people to rank as the 16th-largest city in the state. And we distributed 2.8 million pounds of food in 2016, which is enough weight to fill the world's largest heavy holler three times. To give you a clue of how much, so, there are a lot of costs associated with that, obviously. And, I mean, between staff and the space and all that, which we're not asking for, but we would like an increase in what we're presently receiving. I also brought our resource book, which I think may be helpful to you all. That's the resources for all the different programs in Lancaster County, whether it's food, medical care, healthcare, medication assistance, and when questions come up about services, or if you need to call somebody, give you where to call and...
Thank you so much. Any questions for Ms. Brash?
Another question, a comment. You've got a heart of gold. You've been involved in so many different programs of this type over the decades that I've lived in this city, and you've made life better for a lot of people.
Thank you. Appreciate that. It's been, we also see people, I don't know if you all are aware of the trade program, that we see people who have just gotten out of prison, and we do a lot of services for them and case management and lots of other things, to hopefully keep them from going back in prison, and we think it's been a very large money saver for the city and the state.
And we've volunteered out there before.
Yeah, I know. It's been great. We appreciate it. Come back. I'd like to invite all of you to come out sometime during food or any other type of programs that we have. We have Back to School coming up, where we'll serve 10,000 kids, I think, at least, in Christmas and different programs. So, please come out sometime when you get a chance.
Okay.
Move approval.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with the Center for People in Need for the Neighborhood Food Program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Five MM is a grant contract with the United Way of Lincoln and Lancaster County in an amount of $11,525 for the food, for the food distribution through Service Point and Web Access. The grant is funded by the Joint Budget Committee Funds for a term of July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with the United Way of Lincoln and Lancaster County for the food distribution through Service Point and Web Access. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. N N is a grant contract amendment with Clyde Malone Community Center to extend Juvenile Justice Prevention Fund Grant Contract C-16-337 to December 31st, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the grant contract with the Clyde Malone Community Center for the, to extend the Juvenile Justice Prevention Fund Grant Contract. Any discussion? I'll just make a point of privilege to compliment the Human Services Director. She has done a great job with these recommendations through the, both the JJPF and the JBC. And I think with the information that was presented today, I think it demonstrates why we're so successful here in Lancaster County and the City of Lincoln, because we have a great leadership at the nonprofit organizations, and we're able to leverage county dollars to supplement their, their services.
Thank you very much, and I would just like to thank the board again. Without brading funding between the county, the city, and the state, these services would not be available to serve our youth. And our youth and our, those in need have a lot of services, a lot of support, as you saw here today, and that is because of you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Five O O is a contract with Midwest Pump and Equipment Company to provide a 1,000-gallon above-ground, single-compartment fuel tank and monitoring system. The work shall begin as soon as possible from the date of execution, with final completion no later than September 29th, 2017. The cost accounted is not to exceed $23,209.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Midwest Pump and Equipment Company to provide a 1,000-gallon, above-ground, compartment fuel tank and monitoring system. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Number six are consent items. Utility number 1543 allowing the City of Lincoln and Saw New Sanitary Sewer under West Holdridge Street, approximately 1,483 linear feet west of Northwest 48th Street. There is no cost accounted. Receive and place on file the following. County Sheriff's Report for June 2017. County Attorney's Report for April to June 2017. Letter from C and N Enterprises LLC doing business as Dry Cleaning, as Dry Clean City, terminating for convenience quote number 4850 for the annual requirements of cleaning uniforms effective August 31st, 2017. Street use permit applications from Ring of Fire Inc. for the use of Bennett Road between Southwest 86th Street and Southwest 72nd Street for the purpose of filming a television commercial and a location agreement between the Ring of Fire Inc. and Lancaster County authorizing the company to close Bennett Road between Southwest 86th Street and Southwest 72nd Street on Saturday, July 22nd, 2017, between 3:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. for the purpose, for the purpose of the film project. Describe an attachment aid to the loc, to the location agreement.
I move approval of the consent items.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Number seven is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not on agenda, may do so at this time.
Okay, anyone here from the public wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not on the agenda? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please continue with the agenda.
Uh, number eight are announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, July 27th, 2017, at 8:30 a.m. in the Bill Luxford Studio of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold their next regular meeting on Tuesday, August 1st, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. The county commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live. It is rebroadcast on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Saturdays on 5-City TV, Cable Channel 5, in addition to meeting may be viewed on the Internet at lancaster NE.gov under 5-City TV Video on Demand or 5-City TV on YouTube.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
Okay, we are adjourned. Have a good week. Okay, I gotta go.